It's 6:30, a call to meeting the board. First of all, the business is public comment. If you have a comment, please come to the podium, state your name and address, address your comments to the board and not to the audience, and you have three minutes. No pickers? Okay. I remember three, discretionary preservation barn easement, public hearing, so I officially open the public hearing. If anybody would like to speak to the issue.
I guess I must be it.
You're the volunteer.
You're the speaker.
I'm the volunteer of the night. Patricia Jenkins, Heritage Commission. I believe we have two barns working out tonight, one the Brown barn, which we refer to, have referred to as the Mika barn, and the Heritage Commission is very happy to have that one, no issues there. And the other is the, oh, Rothwell.
Rothwell.
Rothwell, yes, and that has been on the roll, and we're happy to keep that one as well.
Any comments from the members?
No.
Support the issue. Anybody else have anything that would like to say? Nope? All right. I'm, what did I say? I move to approve the Brown application for discretionary preservation easement on the barn for a ten-year period and a seventy-five percent reduction in the assessment assessed value. Authorize the town administrator to work with the town council and the property owner on drafting the easement document. Do you have a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
No.
Callers in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right. I move to approve the Rothwell application for discretionary preservation easement on the barn for a period, for a ten-year period, and a seventy-five percent reduction in assessed value, and to authorize the town administrator to work with town council and the property owner on drafting easement. Second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Nope.
Callers in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right. All right. I officially close the public hearing. I remember four, Steve Bullock, highway supervisor. Did his summer attire?
All right, so, we got a flagpole donated to the town when they did the mastway school. And it's sitting over at the highway garage, and I didn't know if you guys had any ideas of what you wanted to do with it. About thirty feet long, and it's aluminum with a golden brass top.
So they took it down from where that mast was?
Yes, and then, I guess at some point they had to, and they wanted to give it to the town, and they'd said that they were taking it. And then, they needed it out of there, so we went and got it the other day, and it was just sitting behind a building right now.
Why do we need a flagpole? The Orville Park already has one, right?
Yep, yeah.
We got the front of town following.
I don't know if we need another one.
You will.
When?
When you build the next building.
Oh geez, he's very, Mr. Tappin?
John Tappin speaking is a member of the town senate vision committee, and in some of the plot plans that the architect drew for the town center, there was an additional flagpole. And in fact, it was thirty feet aluminum flagpole, and that was listed as a cost by owner. So, maybe you've already paid for it if that turns out to be in the plans.
But can you store it for us?
Yeah, to do some, I have no idea how to store them, where they don't, because I don't know if you leave it on its side, if it's gonna bend and hee or...
So is it metal?
No.
Is it metal?
Well, it's aluminum, but...
Oh, it's aluminum?
Yes.
Okay.
I'll do research, and we can try to store it.
Just fill it full of sand and set it somewhere.
Mr. Ben Aiken?
Oh, you might have a place. I'll talk to you later, over at my place, up on the wall.
All right. Yeah, 'cause the one in the lower park, it's scallerglass? I believe so. So, another one would be good. All right.
Then the next thing on the list is, there's been a lot of talk about the trash on the sides of the roads, and people picking it up, and stuff like that. I noticed it after the snow started melting, and I'd been thinking about it long before the people had started talking about it. And what I was thinking about doing was trying to set something up. Like what the state used to use, and then adopt the highway thing, except using, trying to get people from the town to volunteer to do it. So I'm just gonna speak in hypotheticals, so like, the board of selectmen could adopt a road, and you could do a road one of you guys live on, or the Heritage Commission could pick a road and do one, or you get a company in town to adopt a road and do it. The problem with doing it is, you'll get a lot of people the first year or two to do it, because they're all gung ho and wanna go do it, then they realize what they're actually picking up off the side of the road, and then they don't wanna do it anymore. And then you start falling flat. Because in my previous employment, I didn't sign people up for the adopt a highway, or put the signs out, but it was up to me to stay on them, to go pick it, and then keep track of bags, give them all the pickers and the signs and everything they need, and keep them going, because they were supposed to pick four times a year. I'd be lucky if I could give them to pick twice. And, and the plan that I was coming up with, I thought it would be easier to have people that live near the roads that they sign up to pick, because it doesn't really make much sense to me to have someone that lives in Thurston Woods drive all the way over to Newtown Plains to pick the side of the road. If we were to go forward with the program, the initial, you have an initial upfront cost, you have to buy signs, trash pickers, and vests for the people to wear. The blue bags that you get come from New Hampshire the Beautiful, so those don't cost anything. So once you get the program started, in your initial startup, it's free. And the other thing that I thought about doing was something along the lines of, they do on the state roads, and that's if a business in town adopted a road, like Tuttle Road or whatever, is to put a sign up that says this area is adopted by them, because at least, if they're gonna do stuff like that, they'll get some kind of ownership over the road, and they'll get some advertising. Or if, I don't know if Thurston Woods has a homeowners association, but, you know, Thurston Woods Homeowners Association, okay, they could adopt a road, and it could get put up on a sign like that. At least, it gives them some ownership over it, and maybe they'll keep doing it. But, I've been hesitant to just let people go pick stuff on the side of the road, and I've sent things in emails to like Julie, and then, of course, today comes on the news that they've been finding more pot meth labs on the sides of the roads again. And, you can't, the stuff that you pick up on the side of the road's not nice, hence the things that you see. You gotta get trained on what's there. Or else, the town's gonna be held in a liability. I mean, someone just goes and starts picking trash, and then they pick one of those up, don't know what it is, and it blows up. It's not good.
Any questions?
So, we're kinda talking about two different things, I think. One is, this was prompted by, I think you maybe saw on Facebook, another people kinda talking about roadside pickup. A lot of towns do that, usually in April, because it's spring and stuff is exposed, and it's Earth Day, and, and then the adopt a highway is probably year-round, in the sense that whenever a particular group wants to go do it, they organize to go do it. So, I'm not sure which of these two things, or which direction, if any, that we wanna head in. And obviously, it's too late for Earth Day this year. I don't know whether we wanna just try to organize one for next year, whether we wanna try to organize something for fall.
And these are on the town roads, right?
Yes. It'd be easier to organize one for the fall, because once you start getting the leaves and the grass high, you can't really see as much. After you get that first frost, it goes back, and everything dies back, and you can really see. Same with, once the snow goes away.
Well, I kinda like, I like the idea, number one. I think we're very conscious around here about recycling. I do like the part about businesses that say, "I'm gonna adopt this piece of road," and we put their little sign out there that says, "Taken care of by the business itself." I think it's a great idea. And there's other groups around here, like Boy Scouts and others, that might decide to take on certain areas. So I'm gonna suggest, with the chairman's permission, to move forward and look into it. At least you look into it, think of some kind of plan. Maybe there's roads you don't want them to pick at, and I'll let you do.
Well, see, yeah, I wouldn't pick roads, development roads, because ninety percent of the development roads are people's front lawns.
Exactly.
You'd wanna do Tuttle Road, Fox Garrison, the cut-through roads that you see a lot of traffic on, that don't necessarily aren't on people's front yards.
Who takes care of a little triangle out here?
Estate, isn't it?
Estate property.
Estate property. Oh, you do?
Yeah, we have, our association has all of George Bennett and up to the first bridge on the up road.
So this is a fine example, so I'd like to move forward with it.
What, where would you get the training for the people, so they don't pick up things that they shouldn't be picking up?
I can do it. I have all the literature on it. You know, it's pretty much just PSAs. You see this?
Yep.
Mark it, don't touch it, and then you have someone like Tom go out and get them. Because, I mean, you pick needles up, and a lot of other stuff, and...
So, in terms of, walk me through, because you get people to go out, pick up the stuff, they use the blue bags, they leave them on the side of the road, so is it you?
Then, no, then it would be us that goes out and picks them up.
And then they just bring them to the transfer station as well?
Yes. And at that point, I'd recommend that after what you pick up off the side of the road, probably best not to be recycled.
Yeah, I agree.
Okay.
Because the things that are inside some of the bottles, and plus, it's, what you're picking up is not gonna be clean. Still gonna have liquid in them, so, and you don't know what the liquid is, so you don't wanna open the bottles to empty it out. And what little you're gonna get, the first few times you go do them, you're probably gonna get a lot. They've been done in a while. But if you do them fall and spring, eventually, you're gonna get to a point where you're not picking up that much stuff.
Mr. Ben Aiken, you had a comment?
Yeah, as long as we, when we go do this program, as long as they separate it, whereas they put for like needles or any...
They can't pick needles up.
As long as they don't pick it up, but we can look at it, and as long as it goes in a separate bag before it gets to us. And then I gotta put it into a designated location, so when I have it transported, at least I can let the driver know, and has designated transportation, spot to dump it at the site. So I need to know if any of that stuff is gonna come over, so.
Anything hazardous needs to stay on the side of the road. They're not allowed to pick up anything more than a gallon with liquid, you know, five gallon buckets.
Okay.
Needles and stuff that they have suspicion about, just mark it, leave it on the side of the road, and have someone from the town go look at it. Which is the way it was before. If they found something like that, it was up to us to go get it. And then, they leave the blue bags, we go get the blue bags and bring them to this area.
Mr. Brown?
I don't, I don't have any comment. I mean, it's just, it's fraught with issues. And when you start talking about needles, and, you know, what's in the bottle, and so on, it's got some, some real issues that go along with it. So I don't know what the training's like. Is it, I mean, we bring them up here, and...
No, we used to do it right on the side of the road, before they went out. That's why they didn't open bottles up. If you picked up a bottle, a glass bottle, or any other bottle that had liquid in it, just went in the bag, it was on the side of the road. If the bottle looked expanded or distorted, you left it, marked it. Somebody would go look at it after and pick it up. Here's, the ones that you don't wanna pick up, look. They, they look...
I'm more concerned about the ones that get out there that maybe haven't been trained or whatever. You know, they take their kids with them and say, "Come on, we're gonna go pick up trash," or some of the adolescents or teenagers.
That's why I was trying to set up a program, so we could have kinda control over that. Because the Adopt a Highway program Tom does, if you're under the age of eighteen, you need to sign a permission slip.
We want them to wear vests, right?
Yes.
Okay. Do we provide those?
Yes.
Okay.
You can get fairly cheap vests for that. And if you're under the age of sixteen, you had to have one adult for every kid under the age of sixteen, if you were on the side of the road making trash. So you, in the thing for the, that Julie had sent out, the actual signup sheet with all the permission slips that explains everything, is the forty-three pages is what the state uses now for people to sign up to pick it. Okay.
I would, if we're gonna do anything, my suggestion would be, let's maybe try to organize a roadside cleanup in the fall, see how it goes.
And the signs you were talking about?
Just litter crew ahead signs.
Yeah, so that's, so people will slow down on the particular...
Yeah, they give you a warning that you're out there.
People are out there.
So, I would suggest that, I like the idea, we move forward. I'd like to put something in the crier ahead of time, so people can anticipate this. Once you start developing a plan, how you wanna handle it, and obviously you're gonna coordinate it.
Yeah.
To make it work. And that way there, you can say, "Don't," all those things you just told us, you can put in the crier, "Don't touch this, and don't touch this," so there's some training upfront as well.
Yeah, and then ideally, the people that would sign up to go do it, I could make a packet for them.
Exactly.
And give it to them a week before it happens, and then go over and get it on site.
Okay.
I think that's very important.
Any concern, Chief Dratchell?
No. And we can put the message board out as well.
Oh, and the road bits?
Yeah.
That's a good idea.
We had it out on Lee Hill. It got canceled, but we had it out there, and just says caution, litter, pick up ahead.
Good. Anything else?
You know, I like it. It's a good idea.
Thank you.
Sorry.
Toby Ben Aiken, transfer station manager?
Good evening, and I'd just go over a couple of things, maybe just one thing now at this point. In a few months, we're gonna be changing our tickets for, for the vehicles, for entering permits and stuff like that. There's other alternatives out there that I'm looking into, that instead of using stickers, because a lot of presidents don't wanna put on their vehicles nowadays, and some of them leaving them in their other vehicles, and stuff like that. And it's very difficult to keep track who's in town, who's not. And it's especially the staff we have now. And I'm just throwing it out there, maybe there's other opportunities that we could do, in order to, since we got these cameras, maybe we could try to do something to, instead of doing stickers, maybe do, I don't know, the scale bars or something like that on the registration, to identify the vehicle that they are, that they are from the town of Lee, or something. I'm just throwing it out there, what we could do to, you know, handle, instead of person these, these tickets, because costing a couple of grand to do a lot of this stuff, and I still have quite a number of them left over, and also, there's quite a few people in the town that don't have stickers. So we're trying to, since we have a few months left before we start doing this in October, November, that's when we start making adjustments, changes for the following, next couple of years, that there's something we could do to make it easier for all of us in the town, to keep a lot of the outside people coming in. My furthest people I've been seeing is coming from PBD Mass. They're coming out, because we're in, we're online, we're the only ones over for that day, so they decided to drive all the way out here, try to dump their trash and stuff like that. So that's, that's the furthest I've ever seen, I've heard from. But I'm just throwing it out there, maybe something we could do to make it, if we have to go back to this, what we've been doing for stickers, but maybe any suggestions that we could do, move forward. You know, there's other towns have been doing cards, that I brought up to the solid waste committee, they're doing little cards with a chip in it, and swiping it, and the gauge just goes up, or whatever. I don't know how they do it. I haven't gone to see the facilities, stuff like that around, but I'm gonna be doing some road trips, but any ideas to make it simple, easy, and cost-effective, and we can move forward, since we've been investing in all these cameras, so.
Question, chief?
You were talking about putting something on the register, you talking about on license plate?
No, the registration, off the registration, maybe a small sticker.
On their...
On the window. Or, and then we could actually do like a, maybe, like an easy pass to say, all right, he's, they're from the town of Lee. If they're not from the town of Lee, if...
You're in the same, you're back in the same boat, though. You gotta depend on, rely on the person to get that, which is the problem with happening now, is not all residents that go and get their sticker.
Right.
I think the way to avoid it is, when people register their car, their hand is their sticker at that time.
Exactly.
Epping does that right now. It's more of a resident sticker, and then it is just a transfer station sticker, so we can monitor it when they go get sand and salt over the highway garage. Just about anything. So it's issued. So if somebody comes in and doesn't have it, then, but there needs to be, it needs to have some teeth. We can't just say, "Well, we're gonna do this," and then the next person comes in and doesn't have it, and we're like, "Oh, okay, sorry." You know, they need to know there's some ramification if you don't have that, once it's issued to you. So, the family comes in, they register their car, well, we got the minivan, we got the truck, okay. Well, they all get it. Has to be in the lower right-hand, lower left-hand corner of your windshield. Well, you can't use the facilities. Now, I stopped the vehicle in there several weeks ago, Vermont Place had half of a, about a four-year-old sticker on it. So, you know, there's gotta be, you know, if you know that every car that comes in there is gonna be required to have that sticker, if it's not there, then you need to go talk to that person, and say, "Here's the deal." And, you know, it needs to be documented, whether you call us, and we come down, and we write them a warning, and we can enter it into our computer, and then if it comes up against, "Oh, you were warned." But there needs to be more follow-up, and something to happen, rather than, "Oh, just, you know, don't do it again." And then they come through, and if it was Toby that warned them, and Toby's not there, that thing, somebody else is, well, then they slide through again.
That's what they go, that's when they happen quite a bit. So even though what we say and what we do, it still, it continues, it happens and happens again. Even though it's mandatory, it says mandatory right up there, but we just need something, the next step to...
Is there any, is there any teeth that the state gives us in terms of imposing some kind of fine for people that...
Well, I mean, really what should happen is if they don't have a sticker, they can't use the transfer station.
Right.
And you have to have somebody there, and you have to have somebody checking the stickers for all the cars. I mean, every town I've ever lived in, like you said, you get the sticker when you register your car, and you can't use the facility without the sticker.
So, obviously, we can't, I think it's a good idea, but we can't move that way, because have to, I've already registered my car already, so they'd have to come in, certainly get us taken, right?
Well, we could, I mean, we could start it at any time.
I mean, they have dates on...
Once you go a cycle, everybody should end up with it.
Right. I like that idea. I think it's a way to go.
I do, too. We should investigate it and move forward. The other issue is, I had thought a while back, several years ago, we talked about this, maybe you weren't police chief at the time, about people who do come here and try to dump, and you charge them if they wanted to. I mean, it's obviously, if they're a tunnel leaper, so they're supposed to have a sticker, they're allowed to dump and save. But however, if they got the load here, and they don't have the sticker, they should be able to be charged to dump in their load.
Well, I think it, yeah. On the face of it, I'd say yes, but it depends on just what it is they're trying to dump on us. I mean, you know, so then you're in the business of screening it. I think, yes, no, whatever. I, I think that there could be some exceptions, obviously, if somebody shows up, you know, and...
Well, if you've got, you know, a family member comes up to clean, dad passed away, and they came up to clean the house up, you know...
Yeah, but we have temporary, we have temporary passes for that.
But I mean, that's, we have to make that known.
Yes, right.
Yeah. But I, I think the idea of having a Lee resident pass issued when they register their car, eventually, you're gonna get everybody. I think it's a great idea.
You're thinking...
We've got the transfer station, now we've got, we got camera.
We got Little River Park, there's things all over, where the resident sticker will help you as well.
Exactly.
I think it's a good idea.
So, what can we implement it, Toby?
Just need to know how much the whole thing's...
Well, we're gonna have to talk to Linda, because she'll be the, they'll be the ones doing it.
Yep.
And...
The next stickers that are purchased should not have an expiration date on them.
Right, should say resident.
And then you can...
We usually do it in October, so...
No, it's not gonna work like that. It's not gonna work like that.
I know, but if we can implement that sooner, the better, probably this fiscal year, just so we get a few weeks to...
Like I said, mine has the date of my registration. You just go by that. And you gotta get a new one. I'm pretty sure I get a new one every year. They'll just write the date on it.
Yep.
So, how would it work? I live in Lee. I get my little registration. I've gone to the transfer station to do my stuff. I move out of town, okay? So what stops me, somebody's gonna have to notice, one, is there gonna be a date on when it expires?
Yes.
Or is there gonna be a color?
It's gonna be a date.
Well, that's what we'll have to figure out.
It'll be a registration.
Because if I'm, I'm just thinking about that...
You still come back and do it.
I'm just still thinking about who's gonna monitor this. It's easier to see a color than to say, "Oh, what's that date?"
Right.
So I don't know, maybe the renewal is, changes color every single week?
Just like, you know, inspection stickers for different colors, but they'll do it that way.
That's true.
You'll make them red for the render 2019, and make them blue for 2020, and just change the color, you know, each year.
Well, that's just gonna have to be something that Toby and Linda, or whoever it is, needs to kind of get that on. Because I don't know, you send these out, right, Toby, in terms of somebody prints them for you, and then you get them, right? So, you have to see if the vendor can...
Right. And I think we probably have to look at the placement of the decal as well, because the lower left-hand corner of some of these vehicles now, the windshield is going down below, where the hood line comes up.
Inspection sticker, yeah.
So, you know, we'll probably have to look at that, you know, maybe a side window or something. So as the vehicle comes, it's easy to see than having to be in front of the vehicle when it comes in. You know, for us, even the inspection stickers, especially at the new location, there's a little bit of glare. It's difficult to see on that front windscreen. So, but we can, I can work with Toby on that, we can figure it out.
There might be something else out there, too.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
And Tom, you had said about the fact that we don't have any teeth in our regulations if someone wants to dump and doesn't have a ticket. We should be able to stop them, right?
Well, we get, I turn around. Well, I try to turn around, but I gotta be careful what I say, see?
If we catch them, especially now with the camera system, yeah, we charge them with unlawful activities, and so to go, literally. But I'm, I'm talking about if they're coming in without his dump sticker on. There needs to be something, rather than just, "Don't do that again."
Go do it again.
Because then they'll be, and the next time they'll have that significant other come through, "Oh, no, you, no, you almost knew why, you didn't tell me." So I don't know if that's an ordinance that maybe we have to come up with?
Well, can you work on that, please?
Yeah.
That's Toby and you doing it, so you can make that happen. There is something in the solid waste order to set something like that, but not that good. I like that.
Larry, if you were...
I wrote, converted, twelfth Lee Hill Road. One suggestion I'd like to make with regard to the sticker, I'm one of those that doesn't like to put stickers on my vehicle.
Okay.
Is to either make it much smaller, or something that would be less...
Uptrusive?
Less of, yeah.
Uptrusive.
You know what word I'm looking for. But I don't like putting stickers on. The only stickers I have is the registration sticker, and the Police Association sticker, and that's the only ones that I would put on my truck. So it suggests that you think about some way, for those of us that don't wanna put stickers, I know you don't wanna put them all over your bed, so.
I hope it's...
But I don't drive it to the...
You don't.
Don't.
But anyway, just my...
You can always hang it on the rearview mirror.
Yeah.
It is transferable.
Yeah, well, that's the idea, that it is transferable. If you have three cars, then you could...
Small triangle, rather than just a square. A triangle will stick out. It would, when you look at it, so we come up with a small triangle or something. We can look at that.
Interesting. Is there anything out there, Toby, that's like RFID or something like that, so that when they pull in, it logs who it is, and if it sees something moving, and it doesn't have RFID, you get lots of lights, and sirens come in, and SWAT teams come in, and I don't know if there's something like that that would, so then, you don't have to have somebody sitting there watching every single one.
That's the thing. You have to sit there, and you gotta watch, to make sure that the stickers are on the vehicle, but, I don't know, it's...
I mean, every other state, every other town and city in the state does it.
Yeah, I know. Just, I'm trying to take...
I think Derry has one of those things, it's electronically, they... I think Derry has one of those things, it's electronically, they, they.
Why don't we just look and see what's up?
Yeah, let me, I go out and do the road trip and find out what's out there.
They might be surprised what's out there.
Toby, take a road trip.
Thank you. Anything else with number five? There was six, Larry Kinberg, Recreation Commission chairperson.
Okay, we're back to doggy waste.
I'd like to request that we get three more doggy waste stations to put at Little River Park. Um, we have an entrance on Lee Hill Road across from my house that people enter, myself included. Uh, would be a good spot to put at that juncture of the upper trail. Another one at the bottom of the entrance to the upper trail, down at the end of the parking lot. And then another one over, um, on the river trail, going, leading down to the river trail. There's a sign there, but there's no station with the bags. And I would suggest that we put three of those in. It would help, hopefully help with that.
Has the, the take five people done the other ones yet? So maybe they might wanna sponsor these, maybe? I don't know.
Well, somebody else might.
A doggy daycare place. Maybe some other group might wanna sponsor it. Well, Friendly Pet.
It's an idea.
First of all, I think it's a good idea. I don't wanna have waste all over the ground at this point.
Well, I was thinking to take five people because they would pick it up. I don't know about, maybe Friendly Pets, but other businesses might not.
Pick it up, right?
Yeah, they might wanna sponsor it, but then you need somebody to pick up the.
Well, they need the bags.
Yeah, so I don't, just, just.
I'd like to move forward with it anyway.
Okay.
All right. See what you can do with it.
Do you wanna take that on, Larry, or are you just proposing that it be?
Well, I was proposing it because you guys took care of it the last time, but if you want us to look into it and see what we can do, I.
I would like you to look into it, see if there's a place that would wanna sponsor it.
Put that on the list, John.
Absolutely.
We'll do it.
Thank you.
Uh, the second item, uh, last year, we had quite a discussion of pickup soccer, um, at the music nights on Thursday night. The Rec Commission would like to offer, and I don't see any reason why we can't, because a private citizen wants to organize and run pickup soccer on the music nights for the kids. And the Rec Commission feels that it would be a good opportunity to get more people out to the park at music night, that they bring their kids. And kids may not be particularly interested in it, but if there's some sort of semi-organized activity for them that's not run by us because we're limited in manpower. But, uh, Joff Carlton's offered to do that, not as maximum velocity, but as a private citizen of Lee. So I just wanted to bring that to the Select Board to see, I spoke with Julie about it, and she suggested that I bring it to the Select Board to see if there's any particular issue with that. I'm not talking about advertising maximum velocity or anything like that, just being private citizen organizing some kids at the music nights.
I just, with respect to, I understand, parents and the children. Where would the kids play? Far enough away so they don't interfere with the music?
Oh, yeah, they'd be out in the multi-purpose field.
So they'd be over there somewhere?
Yeah, that's not gonna be an issue.
And you don't see any trash issues or anything like that?
No more than we got now.
No more than we got.
I walk down there every couple of days and I pick up trash, but.
You do?
Oh, yeah. I walk the trails every night, so.
I assume the fields are available on Thursday nights, maybe, however, nobody's already requested them?
No, it's usually after, you know, if somebody has a request in for a field, you know, that would be one thing, but this would be if nobody's using the field.
Okay.
They wouldn't interfere with any organized activities that have been reserved. We haven't run into that. We haven't noticed that.
Okay, I'm just asking.
You don't think it would interfere with music night, though?
I don't think so. If it does, we'll change it, but, you know, I think it's something we oughta try.
Yeah, well, music night is just, it's become so, I mean, popular. I think it's a, you know, I don't want anything that erodes that, you know, gets people a bad feeling about it, whatever.
No, with the kids out in the multi-purpose field, I think it's far enough away, so. Okay, um, and there's one other thing I'd like to just mention if I could. We'd spoken before about lighting the pavilion, and I met with Dave Air, Air Electric, uh, Sunday to take a look at that and see what the cost would be and how much trouble it would be, and, uh, I don't have a formal proposal yet, but he's thinking that the cost of it would probably be somewhere around thirty-five hundred dollars. And that would be running the wiring from the current house, but we can do it through the conduit that's already in place. Running some wiring up into the pavilion and using LED strip lighting for an ambiance type of lighting, not direct lighting, but an ambiance type lighting that would provide some illumination in there when it gets dark in August and so on. And then the other thing we were talking about doing was putting in some LED, uh, spotlights, because we use one end as sort of a stage area. And just have two lights come in on one end, and then do the same thing on the other end if we ever decide to turn it around. And then everything would be controlled through switches in the, uh, in the house, which would be locked up. So that, you know, somebody couldn't just come down and turn them on. But anyway, we don't have a formal proposal yet. We're gonna discuss that at the Rec Commission meeting tomorrow night. And, uh, and we're looking at our budget, and I think that we're gonna have, I think we'll have enough surplus this year that it might cover that. So it wouldn't have to come out of any other funds.
I think it's a good idea.
But, you know, I'll bring that as a formal proposal, hopefully, but on the twenty.
Right, and the fact that it'll be, the switches will be controlled in other building, that'll be locked?
Yeah, that'll be locked up, yeah.
I think it's a great idea, absolutely.
And then, he's talking about putting in a couple of outlets up there, so if we need to, if we need to do something else in the future, there'd be some outlets up there.
I would like you to just, uh, advise the Energy Committee about it, cause I, at one time, they were talking about doing something with the lighting, so. I don't think they're anywhere close to, I think it'd be a, just, uh, a good thing to do.
Well, I, I, I think it'd be important to get this in place, uh, before the fall.
Yeah.
So that we can extend it, you know, the music night.
I think it's just a courtesy. I think, tell them what's going to.
We'll do it.
Sounds like a good plan.
Um, can I say a question, Larry? Um, a little bit further on, we're gonna talk about the no smoking policy, that door one, which kind of affects Little River Park. Are you planning on staying for that?
I wasn't, is there?
Would you, would you?
Talk about it now.
Yeah, could, could you hang around just for a few minutes?
Sure.
It's, can you move that up, Julie, to be the first one?
Yeah.
Julie, you're the town administrator?
Thank you. So, then we were, I think it was Mr. Bullock brought up at the last meeting, um, people smoking at Little River Park. And at the time, I said it was already in the policy, but there are no signs that's in the policy. It isn't in the policy. So, did a little research and drafted a policy. This one is just no parking at recreational fields, and no parking, no smoking or use of tobacco products, um, at recreational areas. Um, there are other towns in the state that have extended this to all-town property, which we can talk about, but this is just focused based on our previous conversation on the recreational areas. So, fairly simple policy. Um, we would need to, if the board is interested in going forward, we would need to have a public hearing on it. Um, because I think you may hear from some people who don't like the idea.
Well, it also mentions in there, designated smoking areas, so we'd have to.
Only if we wanna set one up.
Yeah.
I just left that in there because some towns do that.
So, I guess the reason I ask, Larry, is can you bring this to your group and get their reaction to this, and if there is any changes that they would suggest?
Okay.
Because there is contingents of people out there that do smoke. I'm not one of them, but, you know, if they're coming to events like at the fair and stuff like that, how are we gonna deal with that? So, is there gonna be a designated area for them just to go and do their thing, or we're just saying no smoking at all, go someplace else, so?
Well, I guess we should have the question then, um, if we were to have a designated smoking area, where would it be? I mean, if you're gonna talk to the committee about that, why not take that question up as well?
Okay.
So I would, actually, I'd like the idea of moving forward with this. I think it's important, especially, I'm not sure if I wanna do the whole town right now, but at least start off a, a beginning part with the recreational fields to begin with. And then if we could say, yes, we're not gonna have any smoking, however, there is an ideal spot which you can go and do what you have to do. It's far enough away, maybe the parking lot or something that's away from the pavilion, that might be an area, then we can put a receptacle there as well, that people could.
Oh, you would, sure.
Yeah.
Absolutely.
Yeah, put a receptacle so they can put their butts in there and that kind of stuff. I think that would work out real nice, so if you can at least bring that up, I think, pretty good, but at the same time, so I'll ask the chief. So what if someone's smoking and it says no smoking? What do you do?
We tell them, give them a warning first time. Tell them to put it out and.
Ask them to put it out.
You know, take down their information, and once again, same with the, the transfer station stickers, we write out a warning slip and.
They'll print it out when the police park turns in the park anymore. I mean, that's.
But the, the fines that are listed in the policy, those are enforceable, right?
Mm-hmm.
These are enforceable fines.
Right, yeah. It's just like our, our noise ordinance, our open container ordinance, and we write out what's called a hand summons, and they have ninety-six hours to pay the fine. And that's it.
So let's move forward with that, please.
Okay.
Are there other groups in town that we should pass this fine?
Uh, maybe the Conservation Commission. I did send it to the department heads.
No? There are any groups you would think of? Okay. Sounds good.
All right. Um, at the last meeting, the board instructed me to advise department heads that employees were not to work regularly scheduled twelve-hour days, twelve-hour shifts. I modified that, um, to ten hours, just so that an employee wouldn't think that eleven points are five hours. And there was a great deal of discussion ever since amongst department heads, because that impacts other operations, uh, in particular, the fire department. So I think that it would be a good idea for the board to talk about it again, and maybe fine-tune what it is you really hope to accomplish. Um, I did confirm with one of the labor attorneys that the board, um, has pretty broad discretion, um, not necessarily in the fire department, the fire chief actually can dictate the hours of employment for his employees. But with all the other departments, certainly, if the Select Board wants to tell town hall employees, you can't work twelve-hour days, but tell some other department that you can, that's entirely at the board's discretion, so you don't need to, you don't need to make a blanket policy. It can be targeted to different departments if that's what you want to do.
Chief John Field, do you wanna make some comments?
No, Chief's never had to leave. They had to bring up, out of rest, and take fire on Brett Woodfield. I think, you know, his, his people already work twelve-hour shifts, um, scheduled twelve-hour shifts. That's the only way they can actually get the coverage they need to have. People stopping in the morning and in the evening, uh, to have adequate stopping. So I don't, I do know that that.
Thank you for standing.
Is impossible for him to do here, too. For us, um, it's a, it does happen. It's a rarity, but it does happen, uh, in order for us to be able to maintain the coverage we have, especially on weekends, if somebody takes vacation time or whatnot. Uh, it just happened this past weekend, as a matter of fact. Two people needed the time off on the same weekend, and, uh, so I had our part-time officer, who works twenty-four hours a week, work two twelve-hour shifts. That was the only way to get the coverage. Again, it's a rarity. That's the first time it's happened to us in quite a long time. But we don't know what's gonna happen for us, for emergency services. Uh, it's always changing.
Well, the directive, um, didn't stop anybody from, with an emergency or an overtime situation, from having the employees work more than ten. It was just, at the time, the board did not want employees regularly working.
Yes, things like this, they come up. If there's special like this, we would expect that safety comes first. There's not much you can do about it. Like you said, it's not a regular part of their job function.
Correct.
It's just things coalesce and all, it happens.
Except for the fire department, that is.
Which I do understand, that's a special prerogative there.
And it's always been like that in the fire service. You work a twenty-four-hour shift, and you have a couple of days off, and you work a forty-eight-hour shift, and, um, fire service has always been like that.
So, maybe we can say we exempt the safety services from this particular policy?
I think, I think we'd say that for all the first responders. I mean, I don't know what they come up against, you know, but we, we were talking about your normal business working day, you know? We don't plan against the twelve-hour work day, or ten-hour, whichever, you know, we select.
Well, except at the Selectman's Office, um, every other Monday, we work at least a ten-hour day, and kinda typically, typically a twelve-hour day.
But that's the exception, that's the exception I'm talking about. There's an exception we, we'd approve.
But that's not an exception, is what I'm saying. So in other words, we wanted to try to craft a policy, as I did, that says regularly scheduled. We are regularly scheduled to work a twelve-hour day. If what the Select Board wants to do is tell an employee in a more, let's just say, physically demanding job, like at the transfer station, we do not want you working more than a ten-hour day, emergencies aside, then you can tell the transfer station that.
Yes, I think it's just the opposite. I think that we, we say, here's what we say a standard day is. And, and if, because of, for instance, the Monday night meetings and so on, that's an exception. You approve the exceptions. Same thing would be true, but it's not going to be something that's just, becomes, uh, you know, standard practice to just work twelve hours.
Well, a lot of this came around, uh, several years ago in a different administration. And I think it was Colonel Dennis at the time was chairman of the board. And part of the issue is targeted for the recycling center, you know, for the transfer station, in the sense of, uh, working with, uh, we used to call it yellow wire, but obviously shovels and, you know, any kind of machinery down there for twelve hours, it, it's hard on people, and that's a regularly foreseeable part of the job function. I understand the issue associated with fire, and I understand the association with police as well. With respect to town administration, I look at it this way, you're not running machinery whatsoever. It's not a demanding physical job like I would see people working in the transfer station. So my vision on this, even though it got broad a little bit, was targeting only the transfer station to limit the ten hours because of working with machinery long-term, long part of the day. So it would not, originally supposed to be applied to town hall employees. Now, I think, uh, we just dealt with this issue with respect to Highway Department, right? So you're working ten-hour days now?
Yeah, we started doing tens today.
And this is a trial up to October, right?
Yeah, and if it doesn't work out, I'll be disappointed. I wasn't, I don't really have a lot to say about this, cause I'm not regularly scheduled to work more than ten. And you, if I have to work twelve, eighteen, nineteen hours, something's falling from the sky or something bad happens.
Yeah, that's a different story.
So, very, very much I can do about that, but.
Don't understand.
I don't wanna work twelve hours in a day, so, or I don't wanna work one to ten hours in a day, so.
I'm sure your family doesn't want you either.
No, so, I wasn't, and, and the, the policy show really didn't apply to the Highway Department, so it wasn't.
Thank you.
I think, I think the other issue that comes up with the transfer station is, uh, they provided us a list of all the projects and all the things, and so on and so forth. Um, but they don't necessarily have the resources to get all that done, so. So the question is, are you trading off the hiring of additional people to get, to get the hours that you need to do all those things? Or, uh, do you look at extended, extended work days?
Well, I think, I see where you're going at this point, and I would rather hire additional employee, another part-time person to fill that gap, so we would have a more safety or safer working environment, so.
Yeah, I'm not against that. I'm just saying, that's the trade-off.
That is the trade-off, and so my, the trade-off with me is to go with another person, another half-timer or something, to try to fill that responsibility.
But it would be the same number of hours, though.
Forty hours a week.
Forty hours a week, so there's no, I'm not sure where you two are going with this, because we're just talking about having somebody not work twelve hours in a shift. So, instead of working three twelve-hour shifts, and then four hours or doing whatever, you're just having them work four tens or, you know, five eights.
Well, I, if you don't mind me filling in on that.
Please.
Well, see, if we, uh, see, if you go with the, say, for example, if you do ten hours a day, and I'm looking for it.
and I'm looking for it, if you do something like that, that's great, it actually takes the load off of me and, and also, you know, the safety aspect, you know, operating the semi-equipped and stuff. But the part-timers could come in a couple hours, an hour before or two before, to get, so I could actually do some of these projects, they could do smaller projects to get a lot of this stuff done, versus I could also increase the hours for that full-time worker. He does thirty hours, they have extra ten hours for that individual to do more work, to get, be more productive on things, to get things completed on that, the list you have seen.
Yes.
And that list is, every little thing just keep coming up, more and more things come up. What we're doing is attacking the bigger things at this point. But I, I, if you do ten hours and we're open, what, seven, it says on the sign, seven to six? We're there at six to six? All right, there's always something we overlap. I overlap in the evening times, especially on a Saturday. There's only two of us on a Saturday and it gets pretty overwhelmed over there, when you've got two people. It's pretty difficult, and that's a long day, I don't get home till like seven, seven-thirty at night sometimes. You know, after everything's all done. It makes, twelve-hour days makes a long day for the guys.
Do you have people working twelve-hour days?
There's times, yeah, when somebody's sick, or somebody's on vacation, yes.
Someone works regularly twelve-hour days.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Someone does work regularly, okay. Now, that's, see, that's where we have an issue.
That, we did that, I did that. All right, I had the, the employee work when we were shorthanded at the time. We needed someone to fill in in order to continue, we were shorthanded a lot. There's nothing we could do at that point.
It's been, it's been a long, ongoing, obviously, because it was discussed when Carol Dennis was here, which is, at this point, is four years ago. It's been an issue for at least four years.
Sure, well, it certainly has been, but.
So my feeling on this is that I want to stick with ten hours, no more than ten hours a day at the transfer station.
That's all right right now.
And the issue, what the chairman was talking about, if there's, if there's some reason that you can't get all your work done, I've always said to all the department heads that you bring it to the board and tell us why, and if we have to justify another position or halftime, we're going to consider it. But if you could rework your schedule where you can get everything done, there's no need to hire somebody else. But there should be nobody working past ten hours in the transfer station, so I, with the chairman's permission, I'd like to get a rewrite on this thing to focus that, that area. That way I won't have to do exceptions for administrative staff or anybody else, or, you know, safety people and fire people and so forth at this point.
I was, I was in there on Saturday, and I don't remember the gentleman's name, he was working the wall. He and I had a conversation, and he was there, and it was about four o'clock, so he had to stay there until six. And he was saying, he said, I'm getting dizzy because I've been here so long doing this. And working the wall is not exactly the most engaging thing, he's walking back and forth all the time, so I just don't want people to be there and they get disoriented or whatever, dizzy, and they do something that's going to hurt somebody or hurt themselves. So it's more of a safety issue, at least for me, that I'd rather have them, ten hours isn't enough. Twelve is a little bit.
But we have said, we want somebody on the wall at all times, so, you know, that's, you got to have a person.
Well, yes, but it doesn't have to be the same person.
No, it doesn't.
Somebody could work five hours and then five hours.
But you got to have a person.
But you can rotate people.
So do you have any problems with your personnel?
Something I want to discuss at this point.
Okay.
That'll be probably a non-public session.
Yes, fine. Tonight.
Last week, Aaron Rossi and I just discussed our concern that we may go over the legal budget. As of right now, there's about sixteen thousand dollars left in the contingency fund, so my recommendation would be to hold off spending any of that money so that if we do need it for legal expenses, it will be there.
Oh, can you have Julian do another one of those reports? She sent us a expense and revenue. Do us, give us a.
Expense and revenue or budget to actual?
Uh, same thing. For revenue and expenses.
Okay.
But she did one two weeks ago. But she can do another one, just keep them, keep them coming.
Well, I'm just, I'm just asking because I now, every two weeks, do a budget to actual and send it to the department heads.
Send it to?
Send it to everybody.
Well, I would like it, I don't, these gentlemen.
Yeah, I'd like that budget, I mean, it keeps us informed anyway.
Yeah.
All right. As you know, we received a resignation from Jacqueline Neal, one of the cemetery trustees. Although we have not received any written applications for the opening, because this is a position that the select board fills. There was a gentleman in today that is interested. It's Joe, right? Jeff. Jeff. Jeff Lapordo is interested. So we gave him an application just so that the board would have information on paper, so. And we'll put something in the ECR and let people know if there's an opening.
Yes, my understanding, we don't have a sex tip, Captain?
To the best of my knowledge, we do not. So we have actually now finalized the LED project. I've been waiting quite a while for the invoice and the final rebate from NHAC. And actually, even beyond the numbers that I put in the agenda, I got updated numbers this morning, which is more to our favor. So we received a total of twenty-four thousand, three hundred and twenty-two dollars in rebates from NHAC. So the total project ended up costing the town twenty-four thousand, three hundred and fifty-eight dollars, which is actually almost three thousand dollars less than what the select board had approved for the project. I've been sending you the monthly energy use reports, so as you can see from that, we, we have started saving money. What will be a true comparison will be really March, starting in March, because the project wasn't finalized January, February. And then certainly after a year, we'll have a better idea, but we certainly appear to be on track for saving what we had estimated we could save, so.
Great. Can we put something in the ECR when you get some, maybe quarterly or something?
Yep, yep.
Can you tell us in terms of the rebates, are those discounts off the bill? They don't send us a big check, do they, or what do they?
Uh, I actually had them discounted off the bill because otherwise we would not have been able to put the money back into the capital reserve fund. So this way, we're not losing the capital reserve fund, so to speak. While I was meeting with NHAC to close out the project, we met in town hall, you mentioned a few things about town hall. But one of the things he mentioned is that they do still have money to provide incentives to put in a mini-split heat pump system. And they would do a fifty percent weatherization match if we installed the heat pump. So in other words, if we were to put the vapor barrier in the crawl space and take out all the old insulation and put the new insulation in, we may be able to get a fifty percent match for that project.
How long is that good for?
Well, he did say, you know, kind of a strike while the iron is hot. The money is available now for municipalities, but it may not be available in the future. So I don't know whether that's something we want to move fast on.
We have to put people that are in there someplace else while we do all that stuff other things.
And we would.
I guess it depends on what we end up doing. But maybe sooner rather than later, we should get someone. The insulation, the vapor barrier part is not the difficult part, because that's not all that time-consuming, and I'm not sure we have to, we wouldn't have to vacate the building in order to do that work. It's maybe whatever you.
Reinforcing the floors and whatever else is.
But in any event, I just wanted to mention it because he mentioned it while he was sitting there. Also, because I had the gentleman that did the LEDs here, he took a walk around and he's going to give me a number replacing the lights in town hall, because the lights are terrible in town hall. Kind of dark in there, so.
Have we checked into any mobile office-type spaces, what they, what they cost, or what it would take to set them up?
Yep, you will get a presentation from the TCPC for that, so. We have a price in terms of putting a modular in, we have a price in terms of, kind of a price, in terms of utilizing some space at the traffic circle.
Yeah, there's two storefronts available there.
Yep, well, the one we got pricing on is the old Ranger shop.
Oh, yeah.
It's about two thousand square feet. So you'll get some options in terms of doing that. So part of the presentation will be options for the town center, but also in terms of, you'll get those as temporary options in terms of if you had to vacate for some reason, one of the things that you asked for is, you know, what if we have to get out of town hall like now? So, yeah, we're exploring those particular options.
Sounds good.
So again, just, everybody keep that on their radar screen, there's money available now to subsidize that work. And obviously, once I have the estimate for the LEDs for town hall, I'll bring that to the board.
How, how firm of a number do we have on, if you would, for the word refurbishing town hall?
Well, the quote we got was three hundred and ninety-eight thousand for doing the whole thing, the structure that they're at at the moment. One of the options we're looking at is in terms of if we add it all, how much would that be?
Okay.
You get into some setback issues.
Yes.
That one, so. But that's something the committee's working on. We're closing in on our deadline, so we're working on those particular options.
I just wondered if we had that number in our mind, three hundred and?
Three ninety-eight is what we got from the fore. The issue is, in terms of the quote that we got, we're not completely sure exactly what that covers.
Did that come from the architects?
It came from the La Valley Britzing, I believe. So the part that's kind of, I don't want to say nebulous, but in terms of what they're actually going to do underneath the floor, we got vapor barrier issues, we had structural issues. What was that, three ninety-eight cover?
Yes.
We had the gentleman from the Dell Construction Bug Meter come in, and the number that we were talking about at that time was almost four fifty. So we're in the ballpark, sixty thousand is the entire difference, but he was pretty confident that he would get that whole thing done in terms of for about four hundred and fifty thousand dollars, so. But once again, you've got to get the people that are in there.
Yeah.
Someplace else temporarily when you're doing all that, all that stuff inside, so.
But at the same time, you know, the original plans for a modification for the town hall was not as enforceable.
That's, we're also giving you that option to, so what if you made it an office building? We're not exactly keen on that idea, but, you know.
I'm not keen either, so that's why I bring it up.
The other thing we have to consider, just like.
Making the existing town hall a true town hall. Because it's not, the character of the hall, the way it's set up now, it's not designed for.
One of the things, like the town minister, just thought up in terms of, it's always nice when somebody else pays your bills.
Sure.
So one of the things we also have to consider when we're doing renovations for that structure is getting somebody else to help pay for it. And utilizing money from L chip and those places, stuff like that, so. The thought was, speaking to those people, that they could probably cover half of that, and so like two hundred thousand, that's why we talked about putting money aside in terms of matching. So it's always nice when you get somebody else to help pay for your expenses, so you have to keep that in mind as well, so.
Yes.
Next.
Two thousand nineteen tax warrant. This is obviously based on the two thousand eighteen tax rate, because it's the first period of two thousand nineteen. I believe the tax collector intends to get the tax bill out this week. The assessor tells me that we have about eight million dollars more in valuation than we did in two thousand eighteen, which could prove to be helpful, depending on how certain large debatement issues go.
I was going to ask, does that include the basements that are in here? No, it doesn't.
You also had in your agenda packet a draft of an audit RFP. I'd like to get this out the door as soon as possible, because quite frankly, it's going to be August before we know it.
Yep.
So did anybody have any questions on it?
No, I don't like the thing that you put in terms of they have to get it done before December, so.
I don't have any problems with it.
Okay.
So the current firm is good for this year, this would be for next year?
No, this would, this would be for fiscal year nineteen's audit.
Oh, so, oh, okay.
Yeah.
Get that thing over here, just put the sign and get it out.
Yeah, I'm good with that.
So, okay, we'll get that out the door. I think that's all I have.
Okay. Move to accept.
Oh, I got something. I asked. You asked about a sex tip. And when she said no, there was a looking concern, we, the highway department is actively burying people right now, just so you know. We're not. We're, we're in the, we're in the process, we're, we're making it work to get everything the right way.
And you have a firm, I noticed in the, the manifest, you're using a firm to dig the graves themselves, so.
Yeah, right, came in and done one.
Yeah, okay.
That's the only full body, I think we, we had a cremation in that full body, and then there's like seven or eight more cremations that need to go in.
Okay, so you're working with the cemetery trustees to make it work?
Yeah, me and Pete Warren are doing it, and Randy is helping.
Okay.
A little, but we're getting it to make it work. I just saw like a looking concern when you like, you said you didn't have one yet, I just wanted to reassure you that.
Well, it's, I'm hoping somebody will push somebody into it or find somebody else.
Well, I just want to let you know that we're making it work so there's no, there's no issues.
I appreciate it.
Stuff not happening.
Back up, yeah, okay.
Yeah, we don't want any bodies floating around.
No.
All right. Hey, Dallas, number eight, move to accept the consent agenda as presented, do I have a second?
Sorry.
Any discussion?
No.
All those in favor, say aye.
Just going to say, you want to do a non-public first and come back to all the signs.
There's a lot to sign.
There's a lot to sign, okay, that's fine.
Yeah, so if you just.
Sure.
Even though we accepted it, we can move on and come back.
I have number nine. I move to enter a non-public session, warrant jar, A ninety-one dash A four three, two subsections A and C. Do I have a second?
Sorry.
Any discussion? No. All those in favor, Mr. Brown. Mr. Brown says brown. Mr. Brown, Mr. LaFleur?
Yes.
Mr. Bubbling, yes.
Julie, can you play?
Oh, we're not there yet. All right. I move to seal the non-public meeting minutes, do I have a second?
Sorry.
All those in favor?
Aye.
We need a rule.
Motion?
Oh, yeah.
Pass, oh, sorry, that's right. Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. LaFleur?
Yes.
Mr. Bubbling, yes. I added, we said on the side, so if you can't read it.
Do you, do we want to start the signing of that?
Yes, that worked out better than.
No offense to Mr. Brinkham, but it did seem to move faster.
Slid right over him, he didn't even know it.
It's kind of weird, because you'd think it wouldn't make.
Is there a bottleneck around this place?
You don't know what slow is.
Oh, gosh. It's slow, it's still gets to the center of the table.
That's right.
Well, he's very.
Either way, it has to come through here.
I know, but it's somehow.
I signed every single one of them.
You do, I know, I just, it just works better this way, I don't know why.
Is that right?
Yeah.
It's flowing downhill, I guess, and that's what it is.
Oh, God, don't go there.
Slow downhill. Yeah, every. John, you didn't even sign this one.
No, well, it went so fast.
Look, see, see why it has to go back down? Can I just do initials?
You can take your hand, you know.
Is that okay?
I'm done, guys.
Where could he be that far?
Because he must sign his name as president.
Oh, that's, that's a cheat. Just a little sticky thing?
If I don't sign, you need to sign this twice?
That was a setup.
Really?
They don't seem to get us, makes no fever.
Oh, come on, don't laugh at the time. Geez, he's really putting pressure over there.
He's gonna come back, and then what, what do you do?
Who's on the other page to sign it?
Oh, that goes with this one. Thank you. And actually, probably some of the stuff at the bottom is just informational.
Hmm?
He may be getting to the part of the stack, it doesn't have any sign here. Just give it the whole thing.
Oh, he didn't?
No, he took it, I come to get it, come.
Why am I getting this one? DRA.
Oh, no. See, so there are just informational stuff.
There is?
If they don't have the little flags sticking out of them, those are just informational ones.
Oh, I didn't want to see any information, I had enough information.
Sorry, no flag.
I didn't want to see that one either.
If you went the other way, you'd still be.
Very meticulous with his signature.
You got to look, John.
I gotta look.
That's all right.
That's all right.
I'd rose around.
Comes around.
I have number eleven, this lady has unfinished business, do we have anything?
No, no.
I have one complaint. I seek support of my fellow board members, I would like my mailbox moved back to where it was in the town hall. My life is just so discombobulated, because now I have to go to a different location after four years, so, I would like support of my fellow members to have my mailbox moved back.
I don't know how you stand the stress, buddy.
Yeah, I know.
What mailbox? I have a delivery system.
Where was it, I'll put it back.
Down the bottom.
That means you're gonna displace somebody.
No, it's gonna be back to where it was.
I'm on the left.
Oh, you're on the bottom.
It's my mailbox you're taking, then.
But you took mine already.
So you're being risen.
I don't even know how it happened.
I did not take. I did not take, that was a sign to me.
Yeah, but it moved. It moved. Yes!
Yes!
I don't know, I might have to.
I better go and take a look at the box, I looked at it a long time.
The Kentucky Derby winner now is also fighting.
Yes, I know, I saw that.
I saw that, for his, yeah. Well, I was in coming first.
Nine million dollars those people lost.
See one, but then they disqualified him, because he totally, he moved out of his lane and totally tangled up the other horses.
Oh, no. A foul, a foul.
Foul.
It's foul.
Foul.
Oh, that's.
All right. So, anything? Nothing from the planning board or anything?
General, Mr. John? Nothing's happening.
All right. Motion to adjourn, do I have a second?
Sorry.
All those in favor?
Aye.